All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the King George County School Board Regular Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for Republican employee comment if we have any. Ms. Rinko? None? Mr. Vance, do we have anyone online? Okay, then we'll charge ahead. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Yes, I would like to move the action item of on board norms and protocols to a discussion item.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second, did.
And any discussion?
Yes, I mean, I'll just add that I appreciate that it's been worked on for a long time. It started last year, so I'm not trying to delay it unduly, but I think there's just a few things that are common sense and easy fixes that we can make that'll be that much more easily in a discussion format versus trying to do it through a national item. And so then we should be able to hopefully approve them next meeting after making individual corrections this meeting.
Okay, even though we did them in the training session, do you want additional changes?
That's right.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Madam Chair. On your, on your discussion agenda tonight is Policy BDB, Special School Board Meetings. You know, I think that gets into the procedures for how to go about, which I don't know if that is going to be part of your norms and protocols. And if so, you may want to delay that or pull that from that agenda, and we'll bring it back to you to coincide with your norms and protocols. I don't know, I'm just.
Sorry, which one? Say that again.
E as in boy, D as in delta.
In the policies.
That's right. BDB.
Oh, meetings. Okay. How about we just, we can discuss, we can put the norms and protocols ahead of the policy manual updates, and then we can decide at that time if it makes sense to just push the, that policy to the following meeting. Does that work?
Sounds good.
Okay.
So you're saying those items would still be discussed, they would just be under the norms and protocols?
Say that again.
You're saying that the items that Dr. Benson just recommended will still be discussed, but they'll just be under the norms and protocols rather than as separate items?
I guess we could do it that way. I guess what I meant was we can have the norms and protocol discussion, and then when we get to the policy manual updates, if it makes sense to pull BDB and push it to a following, a follow-on discussion session at another meeting, we could make that determination then.
Madam Chair, I should add, I just checked the packet. I don't see BDB in there, so it may be that Ms. Bushrod has already pulled that from your packet this evening.
Okay.
It's the hard copy. I don't know, I just didn't want you to get to that point in your agenda and then be surprised if BDB is not there for you to look at.
Okay, well, then how about we just strike it and we'll revisit it?
Back to you.
Okay.
Strike what now?
Policy Manual Update, BDB, Special School Board Meetings.
Just bring that back to you.
Next meeting.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Unless there are any objections? Okay. All right, any further changes? All right, at this time, we will move on to a presentation on inclusive practices. I believe we have Dr. Bush with us this evening.
All right, good evening. Chairwoman Gonzalez, members of the school board, and Dr. Benson. I'm here tonight to discuss with you inclusive practices for King George County schools. So inclusive practices. Oh, that slide. Oh, gotcha. That's okay. Inclusive school classrooms support the abilities and recognize the possibilities of all of our students. There we go. Thank you. This is a quote by Nicole Herodix. And next slide, please. What is inclusion? What does it mean to us and what is it according to the Virginia Department of Education? It's a school-wide and system-wide commitment to structures and practices integrated into an overall mission of educating all children. All really is the key word here and what we're going for. Go to the next slide. This really dovetails very nicely with the current King George Mission Statement that was just adopted in the strategic plan. And it really is a strand that runs throughout our entire strategic plan. As you can see there, this is our new mission statement that was adopted a few months ago and that we empower, engage, and inspire our students in a caring, safe, and healthy learning environment, providing them with diverse and dynamic learning experiences and skills for success in an ever-changing world. So why am I here tonight? I'm here tonight because last year in March, the General Assembly and the government, the governor, made it a requirement specifically that we report the results of an inclusive practice self-assessment and action plan to our school board, the superintendent, and the local special ed advisory committee. So here was our process in starting this year in the spring. We sent out a survey to all staff. We met with the school-based teams to review the survey data for their schools specifically. It was broken out. We got feedback from each school by reviewing their current status on a rubric that was provided by the state. And then we asked them about specific practices and where they felt their school lied within each of those. And then we looked to compile all the data for the division-wide snapshot, which is what we're going to talk about this evening, developed a plan, it's a short-term plan right now, and now we're sharing it with the public. So the first thing we're going to look at is the data analysis. One is the indicator data, and then the second part is the staff survey. So here you have indicator five. This is based on Virginia Department of Education's special ed performance data, where we look at the least restrictive environment where our students with disabilities are served in the school division. So for 5A, this really is a snapshot. The state target being, they want to see 71.6 or more of our students with disabilities being served in the general education setting for 80% or more of their day. That's the first one, we meet that. And then B, we look at students in the regular education class less than 40% of the day. So these are our students who are on more intensive classes in our learning support classes that might have cognitive disabilities and really have to have specialized instruction within self-contained classrooms. So the state wants us to have 8.4% or less of students with disabilities in those classes, in regular classes, 40% a day. And right now, we're at 1.2%. So we do a really good job of that. And this is a good indicator for us of our inclusive practices as a division. Now, the part that we need to work on is 5C. This is students that are served outside of public school that we're responsible for, but because they need a more restrictive environment, such as a private day school, a residential, right now, the state target actually moved the last year or two from 2.5% to 3.9% because of some of the more severe behaviors that have emerged post-pandemic. And so we're currently at 5.3. We've been pretty steady at that point. We have currently about 40 students or more who are served outside of the public school setting that we're responsible for. Next slide. All right, so now we're going to switch gears and talk about the survey that went out to all staff regarding inclusive practices. It was a series of 17 questions that we put on a Likert scale. Of the, of the staff that was polled, 172 responded. And you can see there that 30% or 28.5% were from the high school. The purple there, Potomac, was at 23.8, and so on. So we had a pretty good showing from each of the schools. The positions of people who responded to the survey of the 172, we had roughly 59% were general education teachers, which is good because inclusion is not a special ed initiative. It's really a whole school belief system. So through the 17 questions, we were able to analyze this and break it out into four different groups. One was the strengths that came from the survey and from the information when we sat with the schools to go through the rubric. So for our strengths, our teachers reported, or our staff reported, 91% confidence that we are differentiating our instruction in our classrooms to ensure that we are meeting the needs of our mixed ability groups in our classes. So that's a good statistic. 92% responded that our families are active members of decision-making teams for our students. So our weakness that really emerged was the 49% response that discussed the coordination or planning time that was not protected for teachers to share information and collaborate. That we're not really surprised by because this year has been a bit difficult with the challenges that this year has brought as students have come back to school in person and as our teachers have also come back to school in person and with some staffing difficulties for subs and those sort of things. So we're not real surprised by that, and we do think that that will be something that we can work towards as a division again because prior to COVID, it was better. And our opportunities now are 63% of our staff who participated in the survey said that training for paraprofessionals and those who are working in general education for students with disabilities is an area that we have as an opportunity now. And then also, what came across from all five schools and the staffs there was really for us to develop at the central office level a criteria to determine when a student would require one-to-one support because of a significant disability. And that's something that's already in the works. And then lastly, the threat. What would threaten us from be able to being able to move forward in, in this capacity to work towards a more inclusive practice across all our schools? With only 75% of the 100, of the 172 recipients or respondents, we have a ways to go, I think, to get a little bit of buy-in. We want to make sure we have buy-in towards that inclusive practice. So that's something that you'll see with this analysis, what our next steps will be towards moving towards this. So how will we know that we've arrived? We will know, this is always the big question on everyone's mind. We will know that we have arrived as an inclusive, as an inclusive school division when it becomes so embedded in our culture that we, the term really becomes obsolete. And so that's really what our goal is. So here's our plan. Our first-year process. First, we're going to establish a common language and a common vision for inclusive practices across the division. Next, we're going to establish clear and objective criteria for providing that one-on-one paraprofessional for a student with significant needs. We do have students that do require this. And recently, it was asked of me why we have so many. And the reason is because of the work that we do in some of our schools, especially at the elementary level. We have students who require supports. And we, in their general education classroom and the grade levels that they work in. And so in order for them to come out of a self-contained classroom, they need that support. And so as we have a classroom with students that are self-contained and they're coming in and out, it's not always, they're not always going to the same classrooms because it really is an individualized plan. And so this is something we want to clear up that, that piece about. And then the third thing that we're doing is training for paraprofessionals. We are partnering with Virginia Commonwealth University next year. We've actually started this work specifically around behaviors for any student with a disability or a 504, and if they have significant behaviors or maladaptive behaviors that need support. And so they'll be coming in and working with our staff, not just paraprofessionals, but also teachers and anyone else who works with those students throughout the day. So we just need to keep in mind that with small changes, we can make big differences. So I know those three things sound small, but they're really not. It's really important that we keep that vision at the focal point because we know, as Ron Kaufman has told us, that vision is a picture of the future that produces passion. And this is something that I feel like as educators, we are all very passionate about. So I'll leave you with this. To keep us all in focus, this past year, we served 688 students with disabilities. That's a big, a big number. And I think we need to take the time to be grateful for our amazing staff of general educators, parents, special educators, pairs, counselors, social workers, psychologists, administrators, and everybody who works with our students every day. And I'd like to say a special thanks to our principals and their teams as they did a lot of this work alongside us so that they know where their weaknesses and strengths are in their schools, but then where they fit in the big picture as a division. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to entertain any questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Bush.
Can you go back to the first slide for a minute? Oh, I'm sorry. I was just looking, as he's going to it, the 5.3%. And what determines you're serving them? I mean, I have to look at what this statement was. In other words, we're at, we're at 5.3, but the state wants us to be less than 2.9? I'm trying to look at that. Remember the first slide? There we go, 3.9, sorry. So what determines why we're not serving more? I mean, what is, we're not aware, or there's issues with the parent? I'm just curious, what determines why we're not serving all of them?
So we serve that 5.3%. We're the responsible division for them, but they are served in private day schools. Once we have exhausted our resources here in the school division and students require more intensive support that only private day schools can provide because they have additional resources. And this is through the IEP process, then that is how that is determined. So it's an IEP process that determines whether or not that student would be served there. So with our, the plan of adding that behavior support piece with VCU partnership, that is how we are really trying to target that and bring that down. Our goal is to bring back more of those students who are placed private or residential, bring them back into our school division.
Okay.
Because we want them to be with their, their typically developing peers.
Okay, and this would include the homeschoolers in that, in this category?
No, this does not include homeschoolers.
Okay, my question, I guess then the next question is, I mean, are there, do we service homeschoolers with special needs if they ask?
Students can, students with, students who are homeschooled can come to school part of the day and enroll part day and still keep homeschool status. And if they do, then we can serve them through an IEP just for partial days.
Right.
So we have had some families that opt to do that.
Okay.
And then depending on what areas of disability we do offer service plans for students, speech OT and PT. But those are not reflected.
I was going to say, those would not be reflected in this at all. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any further questions for Dr. Bush? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's time we have our consent agenda for consideration this evening. Excuse me. We have minutes from the May 23, 2022 special meeting at 4:45. May 23, 2022, regular meeting minutes. May 23, 2022, special meeting minutes. May 31, 2022, special meeting minutes. And the June 6, 2022, special meeting. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask that we pull the disposal surplus equipment from the consent agenda?
I was, I was just talking about the minutes.
Okay.
For consideration, we didn't get to the consent agenda B yet.
Yeah.
Have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as the dates that are presented here.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. So at this time, we have the disposal of surplus equipment. And Mr. Rolles, what was your request?
I just wanted to be able to discuss it. Let me get down to that page.
Okay, you didn't, did you, so you wanted to make this a change to the agenda, even though you already did changes to the agenda? Is that what you're asking? You want to move it?
Well, as opposed to treating it as a consenting agenda, we'll just.
You want to discuss it? Okay. All right, moving on to our action items. We have the mentor-teacher program for consideration. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. And we discussed this, I believe, last meeting, and so it's coming back to you for action. But this is the additional funding the state is, is forwarding to school divisions throughout the Commonwealth to support teacher mentoring. And we certainly hope we can get your support in accepting those funds for that purpose.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the teacher-mentor program. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, moving on to our discussion items then. So we'll start with the disposal of surplus equipment then.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's, ordinarily, it's customary, but annually, we refresh equipment and we set aside equipment that is no longer serviceable, is obsolete. In this case, we have items that are related to technology. We do annually then place this out for bid to those that could recycle the technology and for, in exchange for the recycling, then they pay the school division a fee. So I don't know, I think it's fairly self-explanatory. This is by policy, we bring this to you for your approval so that we can move forward with obtaining a responsible bidder who can then recycle. And the, the recycling process, they, they have to meet the standards that the U.S. Department of Defense uses in terms of cleaning the machines, if there are machines included, that type of thing. So happy to answer any questions. I know Ms. Half is here as well, if there's any questions that we can answer.
Go ahead if you have questions, Mr. Rolles.
I was just curious, I mean, I looked at the policy relative to this, and it didn't mention anything specifically about the U.S. Department of Defense standards. So I'm wondering, is that self-imposed, or where does that standard come from that we're choosing to?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part. Is that something?
So it's saying that we require the recycler to certify that they're using U.S. DOD standards. We just elected to do that ourselves, or is there anybody telling us that that's the standard that we need to go with?
We've insisted on that for years, just to ensure that any data on any machine is, is completely scrubbed.
Okay, I'm just curious, as far as have we talked to them about what that does as far as the price we can get for, give it to them? If I increase their cost considerably to, because I'm thinking DOD standards might be a little bit potentially excessive. But if it really makes a little difference as far as the price we can get, then.
I guess we've insisted on that, the, the security, or in this case, the washing of any data that might be on a machine is more important, I think, than any price that we make as far as the recycling or the, you know, we, we want to attend to that first, obviously. And we wouldn't want to relax that standard to, if I understand your correction, your question correctly, to realize a better payout, I guess, as far as the recycling? Is that what you're?
Right, I mean, there's ways to destroy things where the average person isn't going to be able to recover it. Whereas DOD maybe is worried about, like, the Russians or the Chinese being able to reconstruct that stuff at enormous cost. So I just wonder if, if we're going above and beyond what we need to do, if it's been asked or not.
No, I can, I guess I could, the only thing I can say is that, and I think it's been two years since we've done this for obvious reasons, but I've not heard or had feedback where a vendor or potential purchaser or recycler was hesitant because of that standard or was altering their price, that they thought it was significantly impacting how they would go about it.
And so to clarify, right, they're paying us, we're not paying them.
Correct.
Right, so they would pay us less if they have more expenses, higher standard than is necessary, is the only point.
Mr. Rolles, you referring to the level of washing and cleaning? I, I think I understand you, you know. You can clean a computer at a basic level, and then you can go really deep, and it's a little more, is that kind of what you're referring to?
Yeah, you can smash hard drive into fairly big pieces where it's still not usable, or you can cut into really little pieces, and do we really need the really little?
Okay, okay.
Maybe we can just ask for clarification this time with whoever the vendor turns out to be, and we can forward that information.
And most of the time, when a vendor reaches out to us, it's already in their contract that this is what we follow. So we, it does guarantee, we do devices like cell phones and hard drives on computers. So I think it's a comfort level for us as a division, but a lot of those vendors build that right into the contract as an agreement and part of it.
Good.
So is there a time sensitivity to this, Dr. Benson? We prefer to move on this sooner rather than later?
As Dr. Benson mentioned, it has been two years since we've done this, so we have quite a bit of equipment, it's a storage situation as well. So at this point, we would just like to get it moving. But it's not necessarily time-sensitive.
Okay.
At your convenience.
It would just help with the space crunch, where we have it currently ready to be shipped. If we could clear that out, then other activities that would utilize that space, it would be helpful.
Understood, and so I guess I'm, I'm wondering what additional information the board requires in order to approve this?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the sale of the surplus technology equipment listed for King George County School Board Policy DN.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Are we, any further discussion?
Well, we already said, made it sound like just asking the question should take like a day or something, it'd just be the next meeting before we would have feedback from the vendor, right? On how significant the standard is to the, what they offer?
All right, well, there's a motion on the table, so any further discussion? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, so let's see. So next, we have the Sealston Elementary School HVAC. Dr. Benson?
Thank you again, Madam Chair and members of the board. We have an opportunity. The state has issued grants to localities to help with capital items that might be related to air quality or upgrades in that respect. We do have a situation where we looked at, it's a 50/50 program where you can match with local funds that could be SRR as a source, that could be fund balance as a source. But anyway, there's a, there's a, basically a half of the cost to do something is born of the state ARP funds. And so we want to take advantage of that because certainly we want to take, make any upgrades necessary or replacements necessary at half the price. So we do have a situation at Sealston Elementary School that the original chillers are still there. This is after 20 years of service. A chiller provides cool water, which in turn then cools the air for the school itself. So we have this opportunity through 50% state award of ARP funds to use 50% of our local funds to complete this project. And I bring this to you this evening because we work closely with our partners at Honeywell. If we can move forward with this, we know that costs, and these days, inflation can be very quick, but they do fear there's a cost increase in the quote that's been provided. We want to take advantage, obviously, of the lower costs and not have to pay more for this down the road. So it is a proposed project. We would like to use local fund balance or SRR2, the remaining SRR2 funds, to help with our local match. We don't need to go to the county for additional funds. And essentially, then we can replace the chillers at Sealston to make sure we have reliable cool air for the building for the foreseeable future at half the price. So appreciate your consideration. Happy to do my best to answer any questions you may have about this project. But again, ordinarily, you know, we have a discussion, we have the luxury of at least two weeks. You know, in this case, with the equipment we're ordering, the sales rep talked with me, and we are fearful that there will be a cost increase, which would in turn cost our county more money. So we would like to take advantage of the better cost. So we would like to take advantage of the better cost if you are so inclined as a board. I'll stop there and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. Then my colleagues have questions. All right, so to be clear, Dr. Benson, you would like a, a motion, a movement on this this evening if possible.
That would be helpful, and only because it's cost, it's time-sensitive with regard to cost.
Understood, understood.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the funds in the amount of $6,580 of the Essor. I'm sorry.
You're the only.
Wrong one.
It's a teacher mentor.
Page 27. Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong funds. Can we accept those too?
At the bottom of the cover sheet is, is the recommendation there.
That's, oh, I'm sorry, yes. In the total amount of, um, 4,020.
400.
424,761 dollars to replace the chillers at Steelston Elementary School.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Certainly, thank you. All right, moving on to our substance abuse prevention and weapons. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, uh, school board. It, you all requested that we gather as staff, and I appreciate Ms. Fisher coming this evening. She's done a great job gathering together some of the resources that we have related to substance abuse education in our school division. I know that your agenda item, um, you wanted to, to discuss this, so we hope to provide a basis for your discussion. And then we'll turn it over to you all as far as any additional discussion you want to have with regard to weapons and the avoidance of weapons in our schools. So with that, I'll reintroduce Ms. Fisher. Appreciate you being here.
Okay, you can go to the next slide. Okay, so, um, tonight I am just going to talk to you briefly about our substance abuse education program in King George County schools. We do have a, a fairly robust program, um, and the primary responsibility is, uh, does lie with our PE and health teachers. And I've listed out here some of the statutes and policies that, um, support that requirement in those courses. First of all, of course, our SOQs require that PE and health be offered to our students. The second set of statutes and policy states specifically that drug and drug abuse education will, um, be provided in the health education program. And then finally, it's supported at the state level, uh, through the, uh, health education SOLs, which were updated most recently in 2020 to include, um, a strand of substance abuse prevention. Uh, so I did gather some information from our, um, schools and teachers. Obviously, I don't supervise our teachers, so, um, I gathered information directly from them in regards to what they are doing in their PE and health classrooms. It was at the end of the year, um, full disclosure, so, um, I did not hear back from every school, but I think we have a good example of, examples of what is going on across the division. Um, here is Ms. Mim, she's PE teacher at Potomac Elementary School. Uh, she provides health SOLs, um, in February in conjunction with the American Heart Association, uh, Heart Challenge that she does, and that connects the Heart Challenge with the negative effects of tobacco and vaping on the heart, lungs, and mind. And this year, she was actually, um, Potomac was recognized as one of the top 25 schools in the American Heart Association Heart Challenge. And that's the symbol there. Uh, in addition, in grade five, uh, Ms. Mimms collaborates with the school resource officer who teaches the Dare curriculum through the PE and health classes, um, to all fifth grade students. At the middle school level, this is, uh, Ms. Archibald, she is a PE teacher, and I believe she's also the department chair. She teaches substance abuse education through her sixth grade PE classes. There is a state curriculum called Choice Led Health Course, um, that was developed, um, a couple of years back between VDOE, VDH, and the Department of, um, Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. And it provides, um, lessons on a variety of topics, K through 12, under the health umbrella. And this is just a small listing here of some of the lessons that, uh, she teaches to sixth grade students that relate to substance abuse, uh, prevention and awareness. As well as, um, Ms. Archibald also participates in the annual Kids' Heart Challenge, uh, that I shared with you on the previous slide. Again, connecting those standards, um, in the classroom with that initiative, um, for healthy hearts. So while the primary focus on substance abuse education, our primary responsibility falls with our PE and health teachers, there's also many other, um, opportunities for support across the division. Our school counselors provide guidance lessons on a broader set of topics such as, um, uh, decision-making, um, setting goals, those sorts of things. Uh, they also connect our families to our schools in those lessons through family engagement activities. And there is, um, one SOL in the counseling standards, um, specifically to discussing the emotional and physical dangers of substance use. Um, so that's part of the comprehensive counseling curriculum. Um, as I shared, um, a moment ago, our school resource officers also provide the Dare curriculum. Dare has been around for a very long time. Um, it's been, it's really been revamped in the last, um, probably six or eight years. It's very evidence-based at this point. Um, we provide it to all students in fifth and seventh grade in the division. Uh, I went speaking with Deputy Marini, who is our, I believe she's like the lead Dare officer, she's our Steelston SRO. Um, she said they are also looking at developing, they being Dare, uh, K through two and nine through 12 curriculum that she, um, would like to implement. She feels the timeline for the K through 12 is, um, potentially could be completed this summer, and she would, um, most likely pilot that next year, um, to get a feel for it before rolling it out to the division. And then at the high school level, uh, Deputy Thompson has provided, um, courses or lessons in, it's called Virginia Rules. That's a website, um, from the state of Virginia, um, and piloted that in some ninth grade PE classes. However, this was pre-COVID, um, and so that's something that is back on the table for conversation. Just talking about the laws and rules of Virginia. And then, um, finally, our community collaboration, we do collaborate with RACSB, with Office on Youth, other agencies that have substance abuse awareness and prevention components. Um, one of those was Too Good for Drugs, which was a grant program that we, um, partnered with for, gosh, 10 or 12 years. Unfortunately, ended in 2020, um, with the retirement of the provider. But Dare, the Dare program has, uh, replaced that, um, mostly. And then RACSB does provide, uh, prevention services. And, uh, Ms. Jennifer Bateman, who I believe actually lives in King George County, um, she presented one of those courses called The Dangers of Vaping to our, um, JROTC classes. I believe it was last year. Uh, so this is just one example of something our school counselors do to, um, you know, connect those lessons from PE and health into, um, you know, across the division with some fun activities. Red Ribbon Week is a big week in October, typically leading up to like, uh, the Halloween season, where they prevent less, present lessons as the school counselor, as well as the SRO, both of whom are pictured there, to, to all of the classrooms in the schools. I know, uh, Red Ribbon takes place in all of the schools. These activities are specific to King George Elementary School, um, and this was this past year what they did. And then, uh, again, just to touch base on Dare, this is provided at all of the elementary schools, um, and to all fifth graders. So that's more than 300 students annually that complete that 10-week Dare program. That includes not just substance abuse, um, education and awareness, but in the, in the bigger picture, being responsible, making good decisions, um, how to address peer pressure, bullying, helping of others, et cetera. So those are the prevention activities we have in place. Unfortunately, there are times when interventions are also needed, when students are, um, in need of more intensive services due to substance abuse, um, concerns or issues. Uh, we, you know, certainly the, um, resources are typically outside of the school setting. However, the statutes, um, Virginia statute does allow for a school board, um, authority over requiring students to participate in an evaluation, um, or education program if they feel that there is a need. So it is supported, um, by a statute and policy. And some of, you can go to the next. And then some of those, um, resources that we connect families to, because, and this is actually one of the policies, um, of the boards, uh, while the primary responsibility does lie with the, with the family and outside of the school setting, we certainly want to provide, um, the resources that we have available to us, um, to help support those students. Our school counselors and social workers do connect our families to community resources, such as Office on Youth, who has, you know, they have the skills and the expertise to, uh, provide those interventions in a clinical setting, as well as RACSB, our local community services board. In addition to those, um, external resources for the, the treatment, evaluation of students, we also, um, just, this just happened last year, um, purchased a Safe Schools educational program that has professional development available for teachers, but also, um, self-paced lessons for students that can be individualized for, per their need, and these are some of the topics that are addressed in that, um, program that includes, uh, substance abuse awareness and prevention, education, et cetera. If the need arises, they can be assigned to, to those as well. And that is substance abuse education, King George County schools.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Are there any questions?
Yes, several. Um, one, how do you determine whether, well, let me back up and very specific. Over the last several years, these look very good, by the way. Thank you for doing that. That's kind of hitting at the root of the issue and, uh, what we're trying to teach, um, our students here, which is excellent. How do you determine whether it's been successful and has it been successful? Do you have a criteria to say this is working or it's not working? Do you, what criteria do you use?
So those are really great questions, um, and I can speak. Well, let me first tell you, I assume, but I could get, would need to gather more information, because this is not, because it does fall on the classroom teacher, um, I assume that they have assessments, pre-post tests that they, um, conduct to, to show whether the students are learning those skills. I can certainly reach out to them, um, and gather that information from them as far as the curriculum goes. Similarly, with classroom guidance, there would be, um, typically there's a pre-post survey that they do to show whether the students are learning the skills and the lessons being taught. Push that a step further, um, which is actually kind of part of our next conversation with the Code of Conduct. As part of the Code of Conduct process, we do look at data for disciplinary, um, actions and incidents that occur, which would include those substance, you know, issues. There has been a bump in the road in that, well, two actually, one being COVID, and that the data isn't, um, necessarily, uh, a good picture recently of, of these concerns because students weren't in school. Um, so it looks skewed because it looks like it's decreased. However, in addition to that, VDOE recently changed their data collection procedure, um, for disciplinary infractions. And it, it completely changed from what used to be called the Discipline, Crime, and Violence Report to now the, um, Student Behavior and Administrative Response, and those two things do not yet align. And so that data ended a year ago, when the new data began being collected. So it does, has costs and challenges in looking at data and whether these, um, what the effectiveness of these programs are as far as that ultimate outcome with discipline. Otherwise, it would be, you know, those school-based. We do participate, and again, this is, um, I believe it's in my next presentation, but in climate surveys, um, that are done, conducted by the state, those are alternating in years between middle school and high school, so middle school does it one year, high school does it the next, back to middle school, et cetera. And they do have questions about, um, a wide variety of topics, substance abuse is one small section. So we could certainly look at data there too. Again, unfortunately, the last couple of years, that data would not necessarily be a great picture, but historically, that would be another piece that we've looked at.
Okay, very specific question, and you may not have this data. Over the last, um, from this semester, January until the end of the semester, has there been an increase in infractions, a decrease, or is it staying about the same?
In comparison.
To say 2019?
I don't, I wouldn't have that with me. I can certainly look, look at that and see what the difference.
What about just simply January through May? Was there, in, was it, has there been more? Has there was an increase in April and May as compared to January and February, or do you not know that?
I don't have, I could easily look that up and get that back to you, but I don't know.
I guess what I'm referring to here is that it's great to have the education, you know, what I call the theory, and students learning, doing well on the test, and understanding all that, but it's another thing to actually see what action, what are they doing about it? And I guess that goes to, I guess, a broader question, maybe to administration and maybe to Dr. Benson. And that is, it's a little bit like, um, when we have, we know it's against the law of speed, and there are speed limit signs everywhere, and we know that if we go above the speed limit, that eventually we're going to probably get caught and get a ticket. So we generally go below the speed limit. And I guess that's the same question I have in regards to drugs, is that, um, do we feel that what we have in terms of making a comparison between the two, that we have the, um, the guidelines in place that, uh, make it a deterrent, so students realize that if they cross a certain line, that the deterrent is so great that it will deter them from participating in a drug activity?
Yes, I think we, you know, that's as evidenced by the number of students who are successful who never have an infraction of this type. You know, unfortunately, as a school board, when we have to conduct student hearings, you're seeing only those. And again, it's not to say that we want to continue, we don't want to continuously improve. We do. I think, Ms. Fisher, you know, the, the data points that are collected at the state, the, bless you, the nature of the data has changed. But as we move forward and, and subsequent years are collected, we can look and we can then infer from the new data set that is being collected over time, you know, but we can certainly go back and look at the spring to see if there's a, a trend as the weather warmed, so to speak, are there more infractions of this type? There may be a correlation. I'm not sure what we can infer from that.
Well, maybe better, and Ms. Fisher had mentioned it, is, uh, COVID is difficult, it's hard to use, use data in that. But looking at maybe before COVID started, would that be the, for a spring of 2019? Am I in the right place now? Maybe comparing percentage-wise, not because, you know, students change, but just the percentage of students that had drug infractions in the spring of 2019 compared to the spring of 2022, has there been an increase percentage-wise? Because we know that the population changes in terms of total numbers, but percentage-wise, is it increased, decreased, or stayed the same? I, I guess I'd like to know that, because that, that answers some of my question about are the deterrence there? And then the second question I have, I guess it's for you, Dr. Benson, is that, um, do you believe that we could do more to deter, activities for students to not, um, to be so concerned about that these guidelines are in place? I don't want to get caught, I'm not, I'm going to stay within the guidelines, because we know with students, especially once they realize the boundaries, and it's very clear that if they cross those boundaries, you know, that there's severe consequences, that generally they'll stay within the boundaries. Do you feel as though we can put in more boundaries than what we currently have?
Not sure I understand the complete, you know, how you framed it. We, we certainly want to continuously improve what we do. You know, I think what we have in place, not only from a curricular standpoint, but from some of the partners that we have that come in and provide ancillary support in this respect, um, we're constantly looking to see, A, is it effective? And it's, could it be more effective by tweaking it i-in some way? Um, so to do more is always a challenge, because we have a full day of, of teaching and learning in general. Um, so I guess that's the way I would first approach it, is that let's look at what we currently do. Is there, are, are there missing gaps that we need to address? You know, perhaps this type of data analysis you talked about would help to reveal that. And if that's the case, then, um, we could better answer the question, is more needed? Or do we simply need to alter what we have in place? Given that, again, the, the hours of a school day are precious, you know, so if we're going to bring more into the school day, something's going to have to move aside, and we want to make sure that's not, you know, whatever primary purpose.
I guess it's, I think it's obvious, because you and I have had the conversation, that things like using drug dogs, drug sniffing dogs, things like having sensors in the bathroom that will sense vape usage, marijuana usage, and so on. We don't currently necessarily are doing, I know that in the past we've done the drug sniffing dogs, but I'm just, I would like us to see, I think that that's a very valid deterrent, but it is my opinion, I think it's based on some research. And also looking into possibly those sensors in the bathrooms, because I know that probably a lot of infractions do occur, because those, it's an easy place to hide in the bathrooms. So I would like us, if it's possible, to look into those. And if they're not very intrusive, those two areas in particular, and there may be more, I guess I'd like us to explore that, because anything we can do to prevent further drug abuse, and some of that could be making sure those guidelines are definitely in place, so the students know that if I cross this boundary or I'm going to get caught, then they're less likely to do it during school hours.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't fully understand your question before, I would have mentioned that. We have already engaged with, you know, how we could incorporate the rekindle, so to speak, the availability of the, the canines who can help us detect for next year and moving forward. And we've also explored the, the vape sensors in particular. In fact, today, we had a conversation about that, and if we could afford to, you know, well, I don't want to give away too much, but, you know, how pervasively we could then provide that type of help in not just sensing to catch, but sensing to deter, and also
Exactly.
Trying to help educate students to help them understand that we don't want students in trouble, we don't want students vaping.
Exactly.
You know, and so if, if that helps to then spark that thinking in terms of the students, then so be it. I'm all for it. You know, that's, that's less time we have to deal with disciplinary issues and more time we can deal with instruction and teaching.
Exactly right. I'm thinking the same thing. Yeah, if we could look into those, and I know there's a cost to some of these, especially those sensors, but I think it could be very valuable, because when the students begin to realize that, you know, if I do something in the bathroom, I'm, they're going to know instantly. And that would be a huge deterrent, and I think we'd have less problems, but that's an opinion. But I'd like to see how much that might cost.
Just for our public, I want to clarify that these are sensors, not cameras or any type of.
Yes, thank you.
Selection of, of video evidence, so to speak, just simply sensors, much like a smoke alarm.
Yes, I'm sorry, I should, we were assuming the same thing, but the public may not know that. Thank you, Dr. Benson. I guess that's all, unless somebody else has questions.
Ms. Hawk?
Yes, Ms. Fisher, I have a question. When you mentioned the student behavior and administrative response, does that replace the report that Ms. Webb does in July, that discipline report?
Correct. So the D C V became the S R.
Okay, okay, thank you.
The, they recoded all of the infractions, and as you know, there's about 200, and they don't necessarily align to the previous D C V, so that crosswalk makes it a little bit difficult to compare.
Okay, sure, sure, thank you.
Or before and after S R.
And the other thing you mentioned, the climate survey, we are, we're coming up, like, you know, with COVID, it has just messed up everybody's timelines. So we're coming up on it being seventh grade or ninth grade.
Twenty-two middle schools.
It'll be the middle school next year.
Correct.
Okay, in twenty-three?
Yes.
Okay. And, and that's been going on, that climate survey really speaks to a lot of information, as Ms. Fisher said, in, in, in a variety of aspects, and gives you the student attitudes. And it, it's really very important in terms of long-term research, and as well as what we're looking at for the next two years. So I'm glad to hear that's still in place. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hawk. Ms. Rolls?
I'd just say, I'm also interested in trend data, not only just prevalence of drug usage, but the type of usage. Anecdotally, it does seem like vaping has kind of become the new thing. Have we done much to pivot towards targeting that kind of drug in particular? I mean, I did see one mention of it, but I don't.
So, yes, R A C S B does have that lesson. The health education S O Ls that were updated in 2020 includes vaping in information in that as well. And, just one other thing, DARE has, they are developing lessons on vaping and one other topic, and I apologize, but that, can't recall what Ms. Deputy Marini told me. And that will be in next year's curriculum in the division as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Cartwright, any questions?
Just a comment. Thank you, Ms. Fisher, for your presentation. I also agree that we might want to keep track of longitudinal data to really measure the effectiveness of our prevention, education, and awareness programs, so that we can really track our success. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Ms. Fisher, I just have a quick question, I think, on the, I think it was like two slides back, or the second to last one. The Safe Schools Education Program, the, the virtual one, so it looked like that was like a, just, it's targeted, like it's recommended to students, or is that something that's available to the whole student population?
Both. So the initial purchase was just a small number of seats, again, as sort of a pilot-type program, but it could be made available to the entire, you know, all students in the division. But it is much more targeted and individualized, where you can select from, you know, maybe there's a catalog of sixty courses on a variety of topics, and based on the student's situation, you might choose a certain lesson for them to watch and review and
Okay.
learn, learn about that particular topic.
Okay, makes sense. All right, thank you.
Again, one more, I'm sorry. In the education part, it looks like you're doing a wonderful job in elementary and even up to seventh grade and so on, and then the possibility of extenuating the DARE program in nine through twelve. I didn't see anything for eighth, though. I'm assuming that's going to be in there somewhere.
So again, I sought this information from, it was like the next to the last day of school, so I did not hear back from everybody. And so I can only tell you what I know and what I received back from them, again, because a lot of the instruction does take place in the P E and Health classroom, which I'm not privy to. I do know that K ten, K through ten, where P E and Health is taught, every single set of standards of learning has an entire strand on substance abuse prevention and education, you know, developmentally appropriate as you get older. So it definitely is occurring. I just didn't want to speak specifically to it, because I had not heard back from.
It looks like a wonderful job is being done in elementary and even up to middle school, but high school looks like it's not quite at the level, and it would be great to see a DARE program extend to that level. But then also making sure that P E and Health, even in high school, or, it just looks like in high school, we sort of, it wanes a little bit in terms of the education. And that's, I don't know if we can change it, the DARE program will help, but it would be nice to see it not wane so much, because I love the interest in elementary and middle school.
Again, I don't want to make it seem that nothing is happening at the high school level. I simply didn't have a slide to present, because I, I didn't want to speak out of, out of turn. They do absolutely provide the same P E and Health education components in the P E and Health classes for those ninth and tenth grade, which is the only grade levels their P E and Health are required at the high school level.
At eleventh and twelfth, then there wouldn't be anything?
Not in the P E and Health classroom, no. Because there's not P E and Health.
Right, right, I understand it. Possibly with counselors, but that would be it, is that right?
Correct. Or through programs like Ms. Bateman brought, that went to ROTC, the Virginia Rules pilot that Mr. Thompson tried with ninth grade a couple of years ago, and that was through, I believe, the criminal justice courses that students take, so it does go across other levels, but no, not, not just straight across eleventh or twelfth grade for every student.
I guess all I'm saying is I'd like to see an emphasis, whatever that may mean, in terms of the educational piece, to continue all the way through. That's all. Thank you. And thank you for all your work in preparing this, appreciate it.
All right, without further questions, I just wanted to note that we do have, I guess, an opportunity for discussions on any kind of weapons, I forget the terminology Dr. Benson used, but there was a request by the board to have that on the agenda, so this is the opportunity to, I suppose, ask questions.
Yes, sir, I was the one that asked that, put that on the discussion. I guess, Ms., Dr. Benson, I guess first would be just, it's a whole different ballgame, although it's high concern, obviously, different than drugs, though. But is there any, whether it's the educational piece, or whether it's the prevention piece in terms of weapons at school?
Well, to cite the education piece, you know, certainly, safety, responsibility, civic responsibility, citizenship, you know, these, these general themes are, they incorporate, you know, that, that sense of group responsibility that we all share and the responsibility for safe schools. Explicitly, what we spell out in terms of what Ms. Fisher's going to review with you here in a minute, in terms of our family handbook, the expectations for students at the beginning of the year, I know we take time in those, in that initial day or two to reinforce with students' expectations in terms of behavior that's problematic, specifically, obviously, weapons of any sort. I know that during the school year, and again, it's been disrupted the last couple of years, but I know that we, I encourage principals to take time, and I know they did, to take time periodically during the school year, to talk with students. And, and I'll give you an example, you know, we, we talk at the beginning of the year and emphasize the expectations with regard to safety and, and not having weapons at school. The holidays present a time when sometimes students, you know, particularly our younger students, might receive a pocket knife or something for, for Christmas, and, and to show that offer, to show friends how cool that is, that unfortunately then is discovered at school. So we, we take time at those key moments to try to reinforce and, and remind students of the expectations with regard to weapons.
I want to make it clear to the public who's listening, I'm talking about bringing weapons to school, I'm not, that whole nother discussion about any use of it, I just want to be sure the public understands, I'm not connecting those two right now, okay? I'm only talking about, such as you had said, Dr. Benson, bringing knives, or bringing, you know, their grandfather's antique, you know, gun to school to show it to their friends or whatever. I'm talking about bringing things, not the use of, so, just so the public understands that. So is there any other in terms of just bringing those, the weapons to school, whether it be a knife, or guns, or whatever, or slingshots, or whatever weapon you want to describe, in terms of, I guess, I, I'm answering my own question. I, I know we don't have metal detectors, I'm not saying that, but at the same time, I guess I'm talking about, you know, the dogs can sniff for weapons. I don't know whether that's been discussed or even talked about, but there are dogs that do that. Has that been any kind of discussion?
I don't know that we've discussed canines for the purpose of weapons discovery. I think it's really been in the context of substances, but I'm happy to talk with them.
Yeah.
Give his, his title, but Weston.
Well, I know that they can, if there's any cartridges.
Lieutenant Weston.
Yes, I know, I'm, you know, anyway, if you'd look into that, I'd appreciate it. Maybe at the same time, or, you know, as the, the drug canine unit might, if it can include weapons, I just think, again, another one of those guidelines, if it's there, the students are less opt to bring something like that to school. And then any other thoughts? I guess I'd like it to be an ongoing discussion, and I'm, again, I'm only referring to bringing them to school, not the use, okay? But an ongoing discussion of anything that we could do to prevent that, or put into place guidelines, so the students know, ooh, I better not do that, because if I get caught or they find out, I'm in big trouble. Of course, they would be in big trouble if we found it, but how do we prevent that, where they wouldn't even have the incentive to want to do that? Thank you. That's my part in the discussion.
Madam Chair. Ms. Hawk?
We, we need to, to remember that there, there's a whole body of information and curricula, et cetera, in terms of school violence prevention programs.
Correct.
And we have used school violence prevention programs for many years in King George, and I, I think with, with federal funding, typically Title IV, I, I'm not familiar currently with Title IV and whether it is continuing to, to support the violence prevention programs, but there are many, many out there, and I'm sure Ms. Fisher's overwhelmed with information about them, especially these days. But I, I do think it's not just a simple issue of making sure that nobody brings a slingshot to school, or a BB gun, or whatever the lethal instrument is. Box cutters were issues as well. You know, I, I think there's a background of making sure that they have other ways of solving problems instead of using violence.
I guess in this discussion, I was thinking, you're right, that's a whole nother discussion, though, violence. I totally agree with you. I wanted to limit this one to just bringing, but I think that we should have another discussion for a future meeting on violence on, in schools. And that can be another discussion. To me, those are, I'm dividing them, they're obviously connected, but for this point, I just wanted to talk about bringing those things to school. School violence is another category that I absolutely considering, the environment in which we're in nowadays, we have to discuss that in order for our students to be safe. And I don't want to dismiss that, I just think let's take one step at a time, and possibly at another meeting, we'll talk more about school violence.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I just simply want to say that the safety and security of our students is of utmost importance, and we need to be proactive and not reactive in this environment. And in the current environment, we need to have these discussions, it needs to be ongoing. Again, I think we need to be proactive and not reactive, and we need to give students tools to solve problems. Conflict mediation, mental health, things as well, counseling, some of the things that Ms. Fisher's already covered as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Ms. Rolls, anything? Okay. All right.
Could we, on a future, could I put that as a, doesn't have to be the next meeting, but sometime within the next month, could we have a, a discussion? I've already spoke to you a little bit in email, Madam Chair, about the violence issue and our response to that sort of thing.
So, to be clear, you're still mentioning, having asked, discussed that via email. So we talked about, or not, I mean, the plan is to have a crisis management plan discussed in our enclosed session that reviewed at our next meeting, that's, I think, separate from the violence prevention?
It is separate, yes.
So we can.
Both are extremely important, I'm not diminishing either.
I just want to clarify the intent.
Separate, yes.
Certainly.
One is a response, and one is a philosophy strategy. And again, like Dr. Cartwright was saying, the safety of our kids is of utmost importance, and considering the environment of what's going on right now, we must have a continuous conversation about this.
Understood.
Critic?
All right.
Simply, just to make sure that if there is staff support needed, or any information from staff needed to support your discussion, could you let me know at your earliest chance?
Yes, certainly, certainly.
Actually, I was just thinking about S R Os might want to be involved in some of this discussion in terms of violence.
I can certainly check with Sheriff Giles, the, the S R Os are, are.
I understand that, that's why, yeah. So you, I just thought about that as you were talking, that might be of some value.
All right. Okay. Moving on to our 2022, 2023 Student Code of Conduct.
Good evening, me again. So tonight, and actually annually around this time, I come before the board with updates to the student Code of Conduct. I did want to take just a couple of minutes to give a little bit of background and context to the Code of Conduct, since we do have several new members of the board that, since the last time I was here speaking about this. And I believe you have handouts?
We do.
Perfect. So you all are familiar with this book, you all have it, we use them for lots of different things, but this is actually four documents in one, and only one of which is actually the Code of Conduct itself. So I just want to talk about that real briefly. Part one is the Student and Family Handbook, that just contains some very general information about the division. very general information about the division. It's got directory information, procedures for like registering new students, how to apply for free lunch, et cetera. And that's about the first quarter of the book entails just that basic information, and that is updated annually by the department responsible for that section. Part two is pertinent to tonight's conversation, and that is the actual Code of Conduct and contains the information that the school division or the school's response to disciplinary infractions, violations of the rules, et cetera. It is mainly composed from two primary resources. The first is the Model Guidance from the Virginia Department of Education, which was actually just re-republished in 2020, in the fall, October 2021, with some updates, as well as the School Law Enforcement Partnership, Model MOU, which is the agreement between the school division and the sheriff's office for SROs and their responsibility in the school division. So much of the information in this section comes from those two resources and contains excerpts explicitly from statutes and policies, verbatim wherever possible. It also contains more explanation to some school programs and procedures, as well as expectations of students and staff responsibilities. And that, this is a section that is primarily reviewed and updated annually via the Code of Conduct work group. Part three is the actual standard spelled out of student conduct. We, as a division, have chosen to organize those into rules in order to make them a little bit easier to, to use and categorize as such. That was pre-me. So I'm not sure if that was a board decision or how that came to be, but we continue to do that and refine it as needed. But the actual standards that are included under the rules come straight from the School Board Policy, JFC, the Standards of Student Conduct. Again, we include legal and policy references where applicable, as well as make any adjustments for new legislation that comes out each year. We obviously track that legislation and on July 1 typically is when it goes into effect. And so that is updated accordingly in the newest rendition of the Code of Conduct. And then the last section is several appendix items that include verbatim policies and procedures such as FERPA, disclosure of directory information, et cetera. Those are straight from the School Board Policy Manual and are required by some kind of statute or regulation to be provided to the families at the beginning of the school year. So I think in years past, we've published those in newspapers and things of that nature, but much more efficient and cost effective to include it where, where it is needed in the handbook. And again, that's just reviewed and updated annually based on the policy and legislative changes. So tonight, so the work group process, Mr. Bush and Dr. Cartwright were a part of the work group this year. We had some conversation via email because there were not substantial changes to this year's Code of Conduct. So I wanted to talk just a little bit about what the process typically looks like. In the fall, committee members are selected at the school level. There are certain criteria, stakeholders that need to be part of that, and that's in, in statute, that the representation of counselors or SROs, et cetera, are included. We'll meet in the fall to discuss what the Code of Conduct work group does, as well as define our goals and assign those roles and begin collecting the data that we spoke of earlier, whether that's attendance or disciplinary sanctions, what interventions we have in place, what's working at the school levels, what programs they have. We start that conversation. In the winter, once General Assembly comes back in session and school board members have been assigned to the different advisory committees, we come back together and really analyze and review that school level data that the schools have done, worked on in the fall, and discuss the status of the current programs as they exist and any changes that might need to be made. Then in the spring, as those, as the General Assembly makes those legislative, passes those bills and they're signed into law, we just keep, keep up with that because that tends to lead to changes in our policies, which then in turn we need to change in the Code of Conduct. Continue that data analysis, review of programs, make sure the departments finalize anything in the handbook that needs updating, and then I come to you tonight to present it to you. Then moving forward in the summer, because those changes don't go into effect until July 1, which means the policies don't get written by, by the SBA until, or don't get sent to the schools until after July 1, I continue to make changes and updates to the handbook according to these as they get published. So I do try to keep it as up to date and accurate as I can until the deadline comes to get it to the publisher. But because we don't have those policies in place yet, changes cannot be made yet. So those would be made at a future date, but again, it's verbatim, the policy and legislation that is passed. And then we try by August 1 to get the books distributed to the schools. So that's how we change or update the bulk of the handbook. However, throughout the year, ongoing process is to get that feedback from schools. Oftentimes administrators will give me a call and say, hey, can you look at page 17, the sentence? You know, I'm not quite sure if it meant this or that. And so we clarify and make notes, make adjustments for those sorts of things. Of course, all those little proofreading details, personnel titles, et cetera, all of that would, will be updated prior to publication. And that's an ongoing process through, through the entire year. And then the specific changes I wanted to talk to you tonight, again, there, there are not very significant ones, but so throughout the handbook, all of the COVID-related information will be removed. There were, we did include some dis-dismclaimers, for lack of a better word, just stating that this handbook is for typical school year, and there may be other things in place during, during the COVID pandemic because there were some changes to coding for attendance, things like that. Rather than updating the entire handbook, we included statements throughout regarding COVID. Then the three, three specific changes based on legislation that has already been passed and that we know is forthcoming on pages 11 and 12, that talks about our health clinics. The legislation has included requirements that EpiPens be available in the pre-K school setting as well. We already do that. We already have that available. However, it was not enacted by the legislation until this year. So any language that might need to be changed on those pages will be changed once that isn't, is in effect. Page 13, similar, that's our attendance, those are our attendance pages. There is new legislation that adds to activities for H and tribal activities to the excused absences list. So when that policy is updated by the board, it will in turn be updated in the handbook. And then the biggest one, which is your second handout tonight, that I wanted to share with you are pages 29 through 30. And with the, with the update to Sbar and the reporting procedure that the state has provided, they have also updated their model guidance. This started in 2018 and has been an ongoing project of theirs ever since. The bulk of our handbook was updated accordingly in 2018 and 2019 to address all of those changes. However, in October of this past year, they updated it again to, and have updated the levels of incidences that have certain disciplinary sanctions that might be involved. So initially, there were three levels. However, the third level was a broad range of short-term suspension to expulsion and referral to law enforcement. They delineated that out a bit more, and now there are five levels to break those incidences down a little bit further. And so that's the handout you have. The handout is the new version of what would take the place of pages 29 and 30 in the current handbook. And again, that's based on the updates from the Model Guidance that was published again as a second edition, as well as the changes from the Discipline, Crime and Violence Report to the Sbar Report. And that is, that is it. So outside of all of the pending changes that we just have to wait for the policies to come forth, that would be the, really the most substantial change.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
These changes are all from the state, is that right? The recommended changes?
Correct.
And this is a general question having to do, I guess, with a whole lot of policies. I mean, these all look fine. But if we wanted to make small changes to these, would we have to? I mean, I would assume we have the authority to do that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So right now, this is strict, oh, go ahead.
Let me give a disclaimer. To a certain extent, there, there would be some that by, by statute, for example, require that it be reported to law enforcement. You would not be able to change that. There are.
Right, and, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. But we could make some tweaks of our own if we wanted to, based on the needs of this particular division?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and we're ideally going to meet in the fall as a committee?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that would be good. Ms. Cartwright, or Dr. Cartwright, myself. Because I've got a lot of questions, but obviously that would be in a committee session. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? No? All right. Dr. Benson, anything to add? Good. All right. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Okay, so next we have for discussion our July 11, 2022 School Board Meeting. So I added this to the discussion item tonight. I know previously there was a desire to have maybe a meeting or two fewer over the summer, since it was summer break and people had vacations and things to plan around. So that's why this was on the discussion this evening. I think we brought it up before, and there was a desire to have some time to look at schedules and whatnot. So this is open for discussion? Anyone is opposed to canceling our July 11 meeting? Or favor of it?
Sure. So I think we have plenty of meetings in addition to the regular meetings, so I'm fine with removing a regular meeting.
Okay, okay.
Hold on just a second. What's our, I'm sorry, let me look at the dates.
So I have, I can list them for you if you like. So we have this meeting this evening. We have in two weeks, we have a meeting on the 27th of June. The following one would be the 11th of July, which is the one we're discussing. And then there's another meeting in July on the 25th. Then the next meeting would be on August 8, which I believe is the, not the first day of school, but the first teacher work day.
So basically, we'd have the month, most of the month of July off. I, I got it. Okay.
I mean, we have two meetings a month, so it would be canceling one of the meeting, regularly scheduled meetings. It would be scheduling, canceling the first regularly scheduled meeting in July.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Hock.
In terms of establishing that we have a quorum, I have a planned absence on the 27th of June.
That's, okay.
7th of June.
Okay.
The only meeting I, that I will not.
Not be able to attend. Okay, certainly. Anyone else have any conflicts they want to add into the consideration pool? No, okay. Well, so are there any objections to canceling the meeting on the 11th?
Sounds good.
No. Speak now, forever hold your face. Dr. Benson, do you see any issue with that?
No, not at all. But we do, as far as personnel, simply if we can pull together
Correct.
at least three whenever we need to get personnel moving, that would be helpful.
Certainly. Happy to oblige. Okay, so we'll go ahead and cancel our July 11 meeting so as we can pull that from the division or from our school board calendar. All right. Thank you. I know I'll be coming back from the beach the day before. I don't mind that. Okay. All right. So next on our discussion item list, we have the 2022-2023 Student Fees and Charges. Dr. Benson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We, we are required in preparation for next year to bring to the school board any fees or charges that will be anticipated for the fall. This also helps us to publicize those fees well ahead of time, in part, I think, through our student family handbook, don't we? Do we publish those there? So with that said, we've had, the last couple of years, we've had federal-supported meals programs. And our understanding is that that will be ceasing, we'll be returning to a pay situation as far as school breakfasts and lunches. And accordingly, we have updated then the, the charges for those in this policy and policy J and, sorry, JN. And so you'll see a table there in the middle that has the elementary and secondary. And then we have kept consistent the King George High School, middle school and elementary school fees from pre-COVID years. So anyway, we needed to bring this to you for discussion. Again, in preparation for next year, but those are the anticipated fees. The, the, the big change obviously being the cessation of the federally provided free meals for all to a, a paid service for those, outside of those who qualify for the reduced and, and free lunch. Any questions? I'm happy to answer. Otherwise, I guess this comes back to you or comes back for.
Approval, approval at our next meeting?
For next time.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Benson. Any questions from the board?
Yes, it, I'm curious what all for behind-the-wheel driver education. Let me get some context of the question before I ask it. With the previous policy that we looked at, it had to do with driver's ed. Asked some questions about that as a follow-up and found out that it sounds like we often have quite the waitlist for the driver's ed program. And I wonder if that's at all impacted by what we charge, if we maybe it, if that's what we use to fund having instructors and maybe for short-term instructors, you know, whether what the fee is set, impacts the waitlist? In other words, if we had charged more, would we be able to have more instructors and have not so much of a waitlist to get kids instruction?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I know, I have to look into it more closely to see exactly what is the waitlist time. What are the vehicles that we have available for the actual instruction could be another limiting factor, more so than the fee itself. That would be my off-the-cuffs suspicion is that with two, only two or three cars and two or three persons who are qualified to teach after school and the number of hours that are required, that's where, where it falls. I don't know how lengthy the waitlist, what did you discover with the waitlist? How lengthy is it?
I didn't get an actual number. Just said there's always a long wait, waitlist is just what I was told.
Okay. I mean, we do, we provide it. There is a private option. I know several students will take, you know, the private option if they choose, if they need that sooner or want that sooner. That is an option, but I'm happy to look and see what do we have as far as a waitlist and are there ideas as to how we could include more, I guess, sooner to limit the wait time?
Also curious about, so we have dual enrollment cost there. Is, so that's not the full cost that somebody going to community college would pay, right? It's a reduced rate?
Tell me again where you are.
I'm looking at dual enrollment.
Huh?
$15 per credit hour. So that's a reduced cost from what a student would pay to go to the community college and get credit hours, correct?
Correct. And we have worked in the past with Rappahannan Community College to offer. I will double-check that, though, Mr. Rolls. It's a good question to make sure that that's still the case. And if not, if it's increased, then we'll, we'll correct that for your final review.
Okay. I, I'm just curious, is that the rate they gave us? Do they give us a good deal or is?
Yes. I know at one time there was an incredible deal as far as tuition costs. Now, again, we're helping because we're in kind, you know, we're providing in-kind support for the college in terms of the facility and that type of thing. And then oftentimes those teachers of ours who are qualified can actually provide the instruction after-school hours in that case. So those variables in play, that's how the MOU is typically constructed and how we're able to afford our students that type of opportunity. I do want to check, though, on the $15 per credit hour to make sure that that's accurate, because I do. accurate, because I do, that may have been grant-supported on their end. And if they longer have that subsidy, then it may change the cost overall. So I'll, I'll double-check that.
Okay. So I mean, related to that, I was wondering to what extent they're subsidizing cheaper costs or we're subsidizing a difference between that rate and what they charge us?
Say that again for me.
Man, I'm just trying to figure out how this works. Do we pay Rappahannock Community College money for every student that we send over there? And does it exceed the amount that we charge a student?
Does it exceed the amount that we charge who? The student?
Student. This fee right here.
Send. I, I, I don't believe we send money to, to Rappahannock. Outside of the tuition due through, you know, individual students and families. You know, that would be passed through. If we handle that at all, that would simply be passed through to the, to the college. So we don't send them more. And I'm trying again to understand the second half. You're saying repeat it one more time for me.
Okay. So when we say fifteen dollars per credit hour, we collect that from the students and we just hand it to the Rappahannock Community College and then that's it?
Yes.
Fully, everything's covered?
Yes. But again, I want to check to make sure that, that cost is still accurate.
Okay.
We don't, we don't, I mean, we don't make money by students taking college classes.
Well, I was guessing is that perhaps that doesn't quite cover the community college costs and maybe we have to subsidize a little bit for each student.
No, no, they, they provide what's needed. You know, we do provide facility space, that type of thing. And that's more of a, you know, it's, it's so our students can access it. They're not traveling down to the Glenn's campus or some other campus for, for that type of credit.
Does that include the textbooks?
I wouldn't.
I mean, oftentimes colleges require different textbooks than what we would use.
Yeah. I'll check on that and see. I
I would think the students would pay for the textbooks. You have them in-house here? Correct. Correct. I knew that. And we have all the textbooks. If they, okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right, certainly. All right. Next on the agenda, so we have VSB A training sessions. So I added this. I thought we could have a discussion. It seems in our training session in May that there was interest by the board to have follow-on training sessions. My suggestion, I wanted to poll the board for interest was in, in doing two training sessions, one to do a board self-evaluation, which is a recommended practice and I think would be beneficial for us. We did discuss as a part of our, I believe in one of our, or it's, well, I guess it's in the, I think we talked about our board norms and value and protocol, right, to do a self-evaluation at our annual organizational meeting, which at this time is our first meeting in January. So that's, you know, say, six months from now. So I thought it would be in our best interest to do a training session to develop a process for doing board self-evaluations. I certainly know in my tenure on the board, we haven't done one. So my suggestion was for us to commit to a date in the fall before the January meeting to participate in such a training. And then my second, the second point I wanted to propose for consideration was to, for us to participate in a superintendent evaluation training session. My suggestion would be for early twenty twenty-three in preparation for our next review cycle at this time next year. So on that note, does anyone have any feedback?
I agree with the board training. I don't necessarily agree that VSB A should always be the one to do it, though, but I definitely agree with having board training.
Do you have recommended training? You, do you agree with doing a
No, no, no. I'm just, no, I'm making a statement simply that I agree it's very valuable to have board training. I'm just saying that there may be some other options besides just looking at VSB A. That's all.
I see. Okay.
I don't have any recommendations, no. But I, I just don't like to be everything under them. And there may be some other areas that are better. Some other institutions or some other, even here in Virginia. That's all.
Okay. Any additional comments?
Yes, I think training is helpful, but also I think pacing ourselves is important. We, every fall, we go to the VSB A conference. That's two or three days there. And we also, yeah, I know at least, because since I became on the board, I've gotten additional trainings, like new board member, and then there's online training. So I think maybe picking out a training, if it's an all-day training, doing one per school year would be a good pace. So I don't know about necessarily doing this fall and the next spring.
Okay. Do you have a, would you, if you were to only commit to one, what training would you be interested in committing to?
Well, I don't, I don't feel strongly about either of those. So I'm not gonna, I mean, they're both, I'm sure, beneficial, so.
Okay.
I won't. Yeah.
All right. Dr. Cutwright, any feedback?
I think a possibility of a self-evaluation would be good in the fall perhaps, and superintendent evaluation in twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cutwright. Any further comments, Ms. Hawk?
Yes, and having been through both of those in previous boards and previous years, I think I found them to be really content-laden, because it, both of the processes, the self-evaluation as a board and the superintendent evaluation as a board are more, 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 more varied, more complex than I think we perhaps tend to realize. And I, I think especially the, the board self-evaluation helps us look at the way the board operates in a, in a team fashion, in a, in a, a group function as opposed to individuals. We all represent districts. But we need to come together as a board to represent the county as a whole. So I think that's a really, I think both of them are very, very valuable.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hawk. So I would add that to the point made earlier. I agree that there are plenty of training sessions that we can participate in individually, but the, the self-evaluations and the superintendent evaluation, which I know we're going to discuss later this evening, I think the, the, I know VSB A specifically write that those are, they advocate for participating in those as a boards, as a board, board-level training so that we are, we are, you know, properly trained to conduct that in a productive, in a productive fashion. So that's why I would advocate for that. So I guess there was a bit of a mixed bag. Would anyone object to me soliciting dates for doing a training on the board self-evaluation for the fall?
Oh, just in addition to Mr. Roll's point, I think I'm just looking and having done a lot of training, like I'm sure a lot of us have, is the self-evaluation training, sometimes it can be done. In fact, I was just looking online here. You can have a tool that would be a very long series of questions and then all of us would answer those. And then we look at that and we evaluate those questions in reference to each other and even a guide to how to use those. Just saying that what I hear you saying is that the most important thing would be the self-evaluation. What I'm saying is we could probably do that as a demo online. Not a demo. We could do it online. I've done that in very effective ways with other organizations. And it depends on the quality of the tool, but I think there's some out there that could be very high-quality. And then maybe even paying someone to have someone, they would read our information and then give us some input back. Can be very valuable, maybe even more valuable than spending the day at VSB A.
You referring specifically to governance training evaluation tools? I mean, I know I myself have taken a number of, you know, leadership-type tools and team developing, you know, team, team-oriented
Specifically, school board self-evaluation. That's all. I just noticing there's several assessments online. One of them I've heard of.
Which is what?
Govenda.
Where, who, what is it again?
It's G O V E N D A, Govenda.
And so you've participated in these and other?
That's the only one that I recognized.
But you have, okay, but you have participated in others. Were these as a part of a member of a public school board?
No, private.
I see. So is it my understanding that the board's preference is to not participate?
I just, please, I'm not saying not to do that. I was only giving some input, Madam Chair. So I was not against doing what you suggest. All I'm saying in reference to what Mr. Rolls was referring to, having two days, if we were to say, well, the, the superintendent's evaluation training might be more valuable or something, we could do this self-one online. That's my only point.
Okay. So I'll ask my question again. Is, and does anyone object to me soliciting dates for a training session this fall on doing a board self-evaluation?
I think you should solicit, solicit dates for that specific training. Because it is a facilitated training based on Virginia experience and Virginia statutes.
Thank you, Ms. Hawk.
Yeah, it's funny to ask. But I'd also be interested in, Mr. Bush, if you want to share what you find for us for our consideration as another alternative.
Dr. Cutwright, do you have an opinion?
I don't have an opinion. You may go ahead and solicit dates.
Okay. All right. I will do that. I will remind, believe that VSB A's tendency is to not commit to a training if the entire governance team cannot participate. So I would hope that there would be support for that. But, okay. We'll move on. So there was a request to move the King George School Board norms and protocols to the discussion item. So we can discuss that before we move on to our policy menu updates. So I understand that there are, I guess, additional changes to discuss, even though we developed these jointly in our last training session. But for, there is a, the draft copy included in the board packet online that we received, but I've also got here for courtesy copy of the final
I have one.
Version, updated the, I accepted the edits that we made previously. So that being said, oh, you got numerous ones. Okay. So that being said, what is the discussion regarding the document?
Okay. So I acknowledge that we don't have to have it perfect to pass the whole thing. So that's not the point. I mean, we should just get the bulk done, pass it, and we can make changes later. But I think there are some, there is some low-hanging fruit that we can just knock out now while it's in front of us.
Okay.
Most important thing being that, yeah, we sat and talked about this, but then sometimes it's good to sleep on these things and then come back, look at, look at it later and be like, well, that doesn't make any sense. What were we thinking? So case point, we're just talking about the self-val. And we're sitting, talking about doing it at the annual organizational meeting. And as I scroll and trying to find this, it reminds me of another thing I think we should change that Mr. Bush had mentioned before is that trying to refer to these things is difficult. It'd be much easier if we added a column left and numbered them for reference. So that's one thing that I would like to make, a change I like to make before we approve them. But talk about the organizational meeting again, which is my highest priority concern. As soon as I find it, anybody know what page it's on?
It's the last one. It's the third from the last one, on the last page.
Sure. So anyways, the point is, think about back to the last organizational meeting, this past January. Mr. Bush and I just showed up. We just fell in the building and we're going to do like a self-evaluation at that meeting. It doesn't really make sense. And, you know, Mrs., I'm sorry, Dr. Cutwright, had only been here for a few months. So I think it makes a lot more sense. And that keeps situation to have done a self-val either, say, just pick a couple of dates, the last meeting of the calendar year. Granted, so a couple of board members would have been left since then, but I think we still could have gleaned valuable data from your self-evaluation from that that we could have learned from, more than doing it the first day we show up on the job. Or maybe it's summer slow, maybe it's one of the summer meetings we do it. And that, that way, even if you've had an election, you know, folks have been in a position for at least six months. So there's something to talk about. So I would, those are my two suggestions, to make it during the summer or last calendar meeting of the year, instead of the organizational meeting.
Okay. I can understand that. I, I might, I would add, so we typically, I, I think doing it at the end of the year makes sense. Would you be, what are your thoughts on doing it at the the second to last meeting? So we typically have one meeting in November, one meeting in December. And so what if we did it the last meeting in Nov-, the, the meeting in, second to last meeting? So if there's anything to wrap up, could do it at the end, at the, the last meeting in December?
That makes sense.
For example, we have scheduled this year November seventh.
Your mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thought I had it on. We have scheduled November seven and December five as the two last meetings.
So we could do it on the, the November meeting?
Seven, too.
Yes.
Would you be remittable to that?
So if the wording, we just say, at board's November meeting?
Yeah.
Does be, that's, that's a given pretty much every year that it's just one meeting in November?
It has, it has been typically. I mean, we could change that each year when we set our calendar, but that seems to be, we could say at a meeting in November. How would that be?
Would be easiest to be, say it's the second to last.
I can go ask. Yeah. You want to do that? At the, so we'll say the school board evaluates itself at the second to last meeting of the year?
Of the calendar. We have school years.
Okay. All right. And you also recommended adding numbers. I think that's a good idea.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, Mr. Rolls.
Calendar year.
Yes.
Shall I continue? Well, so same thing, I wondered at the top, we have a bold-tied list of norms and then we have a table of protocols. So maybe it would just be easier, easier to read if we just made both tables, both numbered tables. You could have a separate table for norms.
Sure.
Protocols if we're going to do that.
Okay. So it'll be, the norms will also be a table the first?
Make them a table like the protocols and number them as well. Fine. See. And then looking up, this is on page twenty-four of ninety of the packet.
Twenty-four.
And I'm looking at obtaining information about board meeting agenda items before the meeting. So in there, we previously had it as, or packet is distributed the Wednesday prior to the meeting. And we struck that out, made it Thursday on the recommendation of VSB A, because since we often don't make the Wednesday date, I thought it was better to put a date that we're, we're going to consistently make. I think the desire is to have it by Wednesday. So I, my suggestion is simply that we just say it's distributed no later than the Thursday. So and we just can't, can kind of know internally that we hope to have it sooner, but just absolutely about Thursday.
Okay.
So you would just add the words no later than Thursday?
Yeah, right after the word distributed, insert no later than.
Right. Excellent.
All right.
And then the next one below that says responding to staff or community comments at board meetings. And currently reads, board members should not respond to speakers during public comment. There is a bit of a conflict with that and our current, our policy for meetings, which there's a provision in policy BDDH-kd that we can ask questions of public commenters with the permission of the chair. Basically, the idea is to get clarification on something they're saying, get additional information, not enter into a debate. So there's that tension there. And I think we just decide what we want to do. And it also kind of brings up the point that maybe we need to have a line here that says that public, if there's ever a conflict between this and our policies, we've overlooked, you know, a conflict that we see the policy is takes precedence. So there's no confusion about that.
Did we have, oh, we talked about that for roles. Okay, so the public comment. So we can, I guess I'm in the spirit of keeping public comment, not in, turning it into a a back-and-forth session. I would be in favor of leaving it as it is. And board members can always follow up with a commenter after a meeting would be my suggestion.
Okay. So but then we recognize as soon as we pass this, then it's going to be in conflict with that policy. So should we change that policy first? Or what would you advise?
So the, I don't have the policy in front of me. Is that, you're sure it's public comment and not a presenter? Because there's, there's, okay.
I, I can try and pull it up real quick if you'd like me to.
You have the word should in there, right? It's not may, may not. It should not, right? So should doesn't necess, is, is not necessarily definitive. It would still give you the latitude if the policy
That's true.
Opens that up here. But if you had may not, then I would see the conflict. Opens that up here. But if you had may not, then I would see the conflict.
That's true. Good point. You follow that, Mr. Rolls?
So we're, we can do things that we shouldn't do. That's, that's.
What's the policy number, Mr. Rolls? I just want to read it.
Bravo, Delta, Delta Hotel.
Okay.
Kilo Delta.
Real language.
B D D.
B, B, D.
Bravo, Delta, Delta. What was the last hotel?
Hotel Kilo.
H. Just the first letter.
Which, sorry, say it again, B D, B D D H, how you said?
Right, dash K D.
E D D H.
It's in the last paragraph of that.
Capital.
Policy. It's entitled public participation at school board meetings. I can read the last paragraph if you'd like. So it's the last paragraph, I just hone in the relevant part. It says.
Are you looking at the last paragraph?
Right.
So the chair is responsible for orderly conduct of the meeting and rules on such matters is the appropriateness of the subject being presented in length of time for such presentation. So that is referring to. Public, so the paragraph above that, persons wishing to address the school board are requested to contact the superintendent, the school board chair, or their designated replacement on the agenda, which is separate from public comment. So I believe the intent of this policy is that upon recognition by the chair, the speaker shall address the chair. And if at the conclusion of the speaker's remarks, not the public commenter, but the presenter, such as we've had this evening. Any member of the school board desires further information, the member addresses the speaker only with the permission of the chair. Is that the section you're referring to?
Yes, so if that's the application, then I guess the more.
So, Madam Chair, what you're saying is that, that the one to third paragraph says commentary during public comment time is generally limited to three minutes or to an amount of time per speaker deemed reasonable by the school board.
Correct.
And then the next paragraph, it goes down to, persons wishing to address the school board are requested to contact the superintendent, et cetera, for placement on the agenda. So we're talking about public comment and then we're talking about agenda items.
Correct.
Oh, yes.
Since the policy itself is public participation, which doesn't, is not limited to public comment, right?
Right.
This is a community, community member that wants to be on the agenda.
Correct, correct.
In that case, the title for that protocol is responding to staff or community comments at board meetings. So then the title probably needs to be adjusted because it's not, like I said, are we saying it could be community comments, but they've been.
We could make it a community, it could be responding to, we could change it to public and employee comment, which would match our agenda. Part like our, the syntax on our, right, we have public and employee comment. So we could change it to public and employee comment so that it matched and was clear.
Okay.
Would that be, would that help clarify? Okay, so responding to. Public and employee comment. Okay. And then to be, to be clear, I, I would recommend changing then the second column that says board members should not respond to speakers during public and employee comments, so that it's perfectly clear.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Final change, recommend, is. You go up a few lines to, just placing items on the board meeting agenda. So if that last line in red, I think we all knew what we meant when we wrote it, but as I went back and read it again, I think we could word it a little bit more clearly. It reads, the chair will not deny an agenda item if it's the will of the majority of the board. So I think if it's is a little bit unclear, I think we should say precisely what we're referring to with the, say, if it's the role of the board, the majority of the board to include the agenda item. So just adding to the end of that sentence, the words to include the agenda item.
To include, sure. Okay.
I have other ideas, but I'll reserve those for a later date.
Okay, so I can make those, we'll make those agenda, those updates and include it next time for action, is that?
Yeah, I guess the final comment is like, our process in general for accepting policy is that when we discuss it, we have it marked up like we have here. But then for the final action item, we have all the changes accepted. So it's a final clean version that we're looking at and accepting. So I think that's.
Understood. So that's, so that was my intent. The, I, the clean, I included a clean copy as a handout this evening. I thought that was amenable since we all also did, in fact, unlike our policies, we all generate, we were a participant in creating it. So we should have been, I thought, familiar with the content, but duly noted. So, okay, so I'll bring it back next, next meeting as an action.
Sounds good.
Clean, okay. All right, so we'll move on to our policy manual updates. I'll just read them off and if someone has a, um, a question, please speak up. Okay, so first, for consideration is B B, school board legal status?
Are we in page 50 or are we in the packet now? Kind of jumping around a little bit.
In the packet.
Oh, yeah, 50. Okay, I'm sorry, you can go ahead.
Sure. Yep, okay. Policy B B A A, board member authority? Policy B C B, school board officers? Policy B C C, school board clerk? Okay, we pulled B D B, so we'll bring that back next time. B D C, closed meetings? All right, B D D A, notification of meetings. So I have a question on this one. Um, maybe Dr. Benson, if you could clarify. So in, let's see, the. So under, halfway down, so it's on page 59. Do you have that policy? You know which one I'm looking at? Okay, so under special meetings. The last one, the notification of closed meetings held solely for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of superintendent. And then the end of the following paragraph, excuse me, says, the school board shall announce. Or the school board announces in an open meeting that such closed meeting will be held at a disclosed or undisclosed location within 15 days thereafter. I wasn't clear on what that meant. So we could have a closed meeting and it could be at a, at a disclosed or undisclosed location. And it's got to be announced at an open meeting. But the fit, like, the 15 days thereafter, like, you can announce it and then you've got to have the meeting within 15 days. Is that what that means?
The way I read it is if you are going to have a closed meeting for the sole purpose of interviewing candidates for the position of superintendent.
Yep.
Then in an.
Like, and we have to, we need.
Then it's confusing when you have announced an open meeting, that such a closed meeting shall, will be held at a disclosed or others.
So I think maybe as I read it out loud, yeah, within 15 days. So is that it?
For the after that is questionable.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I think it makes sense to me. The point is to protect the privacy of anybody who wants to interview.
Yep.
So we're going to, we're going to interview somebody for superintendent and we may or may not tell you where that's going to be and it's going to happen in the next 15 days, so you're aware, but yes.
Just want to make sure that, yeah, as I, I wanted to clarify, I was mostly stuck on the 15 days thereafter and what that meant with regards to when it was announced. So.
I can ask.
Think that's.
Should be there.
I think, I think Matt and Neil, I think that's it, right, that it, we can announce it and say that we're having a closed meeting at some point, at some location, within the next 15 days. And that's the intent. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Between the announcement and the meeting date, that 15 days.
Within 15 days.
Within 15 days.
Does that sound right, Dr. Benson?
The meeting where you.
When you announce it, okay, okay. All right. All right, next is B D D F, voting method. B F, board policy manual.
Well, I do have a question for this.
The B F?
Right. Uh, cause looking at that, it just, it just seems like it'd be one that'd be easy to fall through the cracks. So my, I have a question for you, Dr. Benson, as far as how do we actually ensure that we follow this policy? It seems like you'd have to have a pretty well filed process to make sure that we hit everything every five years. So there's that, and then I'll, initial part for the board that I'll, I'll add on after your answer, so.
Sure. So the first paragraph, with regard to the first paragraph, you mean, what's, ensure we do that?
How do we make sure that we're reviewing all the policies every five years?
That's, um, in, in great part, that's a function of Elizabeth Ewing at V S B A. She makes sure that all policies are touched. Sometimes you'll get policies that just have the updated date. You know, they're still written in a way that they're, they're appropriate and they're aligned with state statute. And the only amendment is to add the next current revision date. But she keeps track of, as part of your policy service, is that she keeps track of which policies, if they've not been amended or predic, uh, if the, they're not been amended because of a statutory change. That there is, they are reviewed by her at least every five years and then sent to you as an update with the new revised date listed.
So looking at their policy service online, they do say they have a marking where they say it was reviewed but not updated. Cause sometimes you have this reviewing, just review it, but not updating it. So when that happens, do we, the office, we say, okay, we're going to put this before the school board? It wasn't updated, but it got reviewed, so we're going to keep.
Yes, it would come to you as a matter of date and it may, that's what I was describing. The only update may be that you have now a new revised date on that line, you know, where it has adopted. And then, you know, I'm looking at the, this actual policy, this board policy manual. So you have that, at the bottom, you have adopted December 14th, 1992 revised, and it has a series of dates where it's arrived, been revised. So she would make sure that within five years, you have a new date. Of course, on this one, I don't know the, the gap between the 5th and September 13th of 2013, why that's there, but.
Right, so that, yeah, yeah, it's curious. They don't have a line for review but not revised. So that may be a question for Elizabeth. But I guess it's also a question for us. So anytime that comes before us, we're counting it as reviewed. So I think that's a good point for us to keep in mind, if that's the way we're doing it as board, that, okay, they, they turned shall be to is, okay, I don't care. It's good, we pass it, right? But it's not, that's the only thing we're doing here. That's counting as us touching it in the last five years. We probably ought to be looking at the entire content of all these policies whenever they come before us, I think is an important takeaway.
So I think we are, when they, you mean, so when they're included for our review, it's the whole policy?
Right, so it's not just, do we agree with the change? You might need to look at that policy holistically. Is this, this is what the V S B A recommended, but is this policy as a whole right for King George?
Right, correct. And we've done that in the past. I don't know that we've made too many changes yet, but I know like. We, um, you know, even I think last year, we've made some changes to like, you know, a preference that, you know, something, I can't think of an example, but we have certainly done that. And I think we've done that as a board and questioned some things, right?
Yeah, excuse me, tweet one. Yeah, this is an important point I thought to make because, you know, it's, it's a lot and then maybe we just go through, we're looking at the grammar changes, but there's, there's more than that. Okay, that's all I have for that.
Okay. All right, um, policy B F C, policy adoption. And lastly, B H B, school board member in-service activities. Oh, yeah, okay. All right. Any comments that didn't get addressed? All right, all right. So Dr. Benson, I guess we'll bring those back for action next week and then we'll get the B D B back, the special school board meetings for discussion. Okay. All right, moving on to our committee, our information items. So do we have any committee reports this evening? Dr. Bush?
Oh, thank you for the upgrade.
Dr. Bush, yeah, there you go. Certainly, you're welcome.
No, I don't.
Ms. Hawk?
The, there was an executive committee meeting of the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. I unfortunately was not able to attend. I had car trouble and couldn't get there, couldn't get back to the Zoom meeting. But I, I do know that they are proceeding with the, announcing the new director very shortly.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hawk. Mr. Rolls?
I do not have any.
Dr. Cutwright? No, all right, nor do I, nor do I. All right, Dr. Benson, back to you for the 2022, 2027 submission request.
Thank you very much. And I, um, I just wanted as a matter of information for the school board and for the public. This will, this is the, the capital improvements program. The county is trying to get back on a more normal, or what a customary, I guess, should say, timeline. For capital improvement projects countywide to include the schools to be considered by the planning commission and then ultimately by the board of supervisors. So Ms. Han here at the, the county office requested to die forward to her a copy of C I P proposals. And I wanted to make sure I had a chance to share that with you all, given, and I think I emailed it to you, you know, as I was sending it to, to Ms. Han. But anyway, from a process standpoint, the county will collect these from all departments and the schools. And then they will conduct a meeting with our local planning commission. And the planning commission then will mull over the proposals from, that, all the proposals that are submitted and then make recommendations and do their best to prioritize. And create a five-year plan for how these capital needs might be addressed. That information then is forwarded to the board of supervisors through the county administrator. And the, and the board of supervisors then ultimately make a decision about which projects they can afford to fund. And do the work that they do to try to look years out and create a timeline for maybe addressing some of the other needs countywide. So this is ours as a school division. You'll see the projects listed. They should look, should look familiar because they're the very same, with the exception of a couple that have been added. Very same ones we submitted when they solicited the same information for funding through ARP funding. And so again, I have submitted the need for replacement preschool. You'll see the Potomac Elementary School ADA playground is still in need. We were able to, and I guess, I think the purchase order is completed today for the ADA playground at Sealston. As an example, that was a capital item that was approved through ARP funding just before the holiday. So we're pleased with that. We're down to just Potomac Elementary School needing the ADA playground. The bus, school bus refresh is an annual commitment. We try to keep on a, on a refresh cycle so that at any one time, we don't have. An inordinate number of buses that need to be replaced all at once. So the county has recognized that that's a prudent tactic to keep our school bus fleet reliable and safe. Next one talks about the access control system at Potomac Elementary. We were fortunate, and I can tell you it was exactly 10 years ago. It was my first year, we were able to secure state grant funding when it first came out, the, for security equipment. And we were able to equip Potomac with a door or an access control system. We have those at all of our schools. Now Potomac has come up as one that's, we want to bring current, obviously, we want to make sure that it integrates with our division-wide platform and servers. And so we've recommended that the access control system at Potomac Elementary be replaced. That is the actual sensors. The wiring is still there, obviously, and that can be utilized, but the sensors themselves be replaced. Next, we have parking lots that are in need and driveways that are in need of refurbishment. We don't have a firm quote as far as a price, but actually, some of you have emailed me on occasion on behalf of your constituents with pothole concerns at Potomac Elementary, at King George Elementary. But anyway, we want to maintain our lots to make sure that they're safe for, for people to use, obviously. So that is included in the C I P. And then lastly, the preschool, the current preschool roofing. Again, 10 years ago, the, the outer extremities of that, of that building as a whole, in other words, the centralized offices. Furthest down on the right and the, the original, original building, all the way to the left, those roofs were replaced or were serviced. But at the time, the roof over the hallway and the classrooms in the preschool, the current preschool and the cafeteria section were not. And so we have continued to play catch-up and Gary has done his best to leak those holes when leaks do occur. But that roofing is now in need of, of replacement. So we are continuing to secure an updated quote. We had one from several years ago, but we've recontacted Roof Consulting Services. And they are going to update the quotes so that we can give more definitive numbers. Right now, we've just put the 500,000. Right now, we've just put the five hundred thousand, there's a placeholder, and I'll explain that to the planning commission when we meet with them. But I just really wanted to present this to you and present it publicly for your information so that when I do end up going to the planning commission, you're not surprised that, hey, what's he talking about? We haven't talked about that as a school board. So I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you have any other concerns or potential needs, then I'm happy to field those as well.
It could, yeah, I have a couple of questions. At twenty-five million dollars, obviously, for preschool is a lot of money, but tell me, the planning commission is made up of, I'm talking about process right now, and then I'll get to some specific questions, but the planning commission, this will go to them first, and who makes up the planning commission?
My, my best understanding is they're appointed members from the board of supervisors that are representative of the county as a whole, so citizens who are appointed by.
Okay, is there no, I mean, this is huge for us right here, but there's no representative from the school board on the planning commission?
No.
Is there a reason for that? It seems like we would be a major part of capital improvement.
Well, I, I think, let me try to draw a corollary. I don't think there was, it's a potential exclusion. I think they try to draw a representative body, much as maybe some of your advisory committees, although you all offer yourselves as members of those advisory committees. But I think that's the intention, is that it's just kind of a first look, and then it gives the board of supervisors an idea of, you know, what the thoughts are about the proposed projects. Because again, it's not just the schools, it's Parks and Rec, it's the sheriff's office, it's everybody.
Right.
So that may be, just from logistics, it may be overwhelming. If you had representatives from each of those entities, in addition to the citizen appointees, you know, you'd have, it's a pretty good-sized group, I can tell you.
I guess that's why I was saying, I was assuming there was input from all those entities, but not us.
No, I mean, there's no representative from the sheriff's department on the planning commission, if that's what you.
So there's several others too. Okay, you had this twenty-five million that for right now, I mean, I know it's going to go to the planning commission, and they'll be tweaking or changing and questions and all sorts of things. But is there an expectation or a hope at least that the board of supervisors, after it goes to the planning commission, would approve that right now, this year? Is that the hope?
Well, I certainly hope they would. I don't know, the, the estimated cost is a placeholder, obviously.
I understand.
So it's, whether it's approved this year or next year or the following year, we'd have to revisit and get a more definitive estimated cost per square foot, you know, based on design specs and that kind of thing.
I mean, the board of supervisor, I know that this was kind of talked about in twenty twenty, is that right? This preschool? And, but it's for two years, but there's been nothing. I mean, is the board of supervisors expecting that we're going to probably be presenting this?
Yes, it's been presented before, so either, and, and I think there's been, this is my opinion now. I don't mean to speak for them, but my opinion is, is that there was openness about the possibility, and there was a recognition of the need. Obviously, there are other needs in the, in the county that, you know, this would kind of have to get in line with, and they would knock these out as, as, as they were fiscally able to, I guess, is.
I just had a long conversation with one of the board of supervisors, a very long one. And this was, I guess, that particular member was not aware that was going to come now. Maybe that person should have been, but they weren't, so I guess.
Well, it came two years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I knew that.
I mean, it's.
They were expecting it, I guess, but I'm just wondering, has the board of supervisors already sort of looked at the CIP things that they're going to have to be dealing with, or they're waiting for this recommendation from the planning commission?
So this particular submission, then they will wait until the planning commission makes their recommendations to them?
Have they already made, planning commission already made recommendations of other things to them? Or is it a, we'll get all the information together and make one large recommendation to the board of supervisors?
Well, they make annual recommendations, and that's what the, this is part of the trying to get back on track, so to speak. The planning commission will meet annually to field these requests, prioritize them, that type of thing, and then pass along their recommendations to the board of supervisors.
This is done every year, but it's a five-year plan, is that what I heard you say?
A five-year, yeah, forecast, more than anything from.
I understand, five-year forecast.
And then it can, it can then become a bigger plan to be more inclusive of the entire county. You know, so from, when we say plan, I think it gives the board of supervisors an opportunity to see the capital needs across all different entities, for which then they need to consider in a, in a plan, so to speak, moving forward.
So the planning commission submitted this in, before COVID?
Planning commission.
The twenty-five million or the?
No, no, that's, that's a new number that I put there as a placeholder.
I understand, but so the planning commission has never seen this preschool before?
Yes, they have.
They have.
Last two times that I've presented to them, I've.
So it's been presented every year, okay, and this is just another year?
It just doesn't get funded until.
I understand, I understand. Okay, all right, that explains a lot. I was not aware so much of the planning commission piece to all this, so thank you for explaining that.
No, and these are, you know, we make them aware of needs, knowing that in some cases it may be pushed off for a year or two, but it's important to get them, you know, documented so that we don't lose them. And so from, as we move forward from year to year, there may be several of these that don't get funded, but they'll remain there, and then in future iterations, then they'll remain so that as their number comes up, so to speak, we can address those.
Yeah, is, I mean, obviously, that's a lot of money, but is there discussions that once the planning commission gets this and recommends to the board of supervisors, you know, what they recommend of how this might be done? To give you an example, in the twenty-five million, I didn't see a purchase of land. I just saw, I know it's a placeholder, but are you assuming in that placeholder that we would use some current facility for the land? She didn't put anything for the land piece.
Right, no, I just, I parked that one amount basically there as a placeholder. So it would, it, it's a difficult question to answer, because we could, and I have in my presentations, I've recommended they look at the old middle school site as a central site.
Yes.
You know, I've said that several times in several public meetings with them, but I, I don't know. I mean, it, it could be that they, you know, eventually that, that site is slated for something else. And if they choose to acquire land, then, then we'd have to revise this to include that cost, so.
Is there any value, since this is, do others refine any value about us meeting with the board of supervisors even before to give what you just suggested about using the middle school? Is the planning commission going to know that that's an idea that we have? Or that will be presented after they make their recommendation?
No, I've presented that idea for the last two years.
The planning commission?
Yes, and actually, I've discussed it, I think I had an opportunity to discuss it with the board of supervisors.
Okay.
Directly.
All right, because there's other ideas too that might come into play, but I guess we can talk more. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Rolls?
Yeah, I'm also kind of curious about the process here, because seeing twenty-five million dollars in one year, that's like, wow, that's some sticker shock. And so it makes sense, obviously, with the school buses to plan that out. It's a little predictable, you're buying just a bus rather than building. So, I mean, what, is there an expectation as far as how planning for buildings works versus, you know, school buses, like where we might start putting money aside for it years in advance? Or it's just not the way it's done, so it's done with that?
Well, I don't know, I mean, the, the financial end of that would be the board's, would be the board of supervisors. I mean, we don't, we don't have money to put aside to save up for, is that what you're?
So they don't, we never got any feedback to say, hey, we need you to project farther out, as opposed to just telling us, you want twenty-five million dollars now?
Have we?
I mean, what expertise do we have in the division as far as looking around, saying, here's what we expect we need? I know we get some help from consultants, right, who can go out and predict our enrollment? But so we take that, but then also taking into consideration how old all our different facilities are, we can probably predict when we're going to need to re-roof some of them, build, rebuild one, tear one down, build again. I mean, to what extent is that happening? Do we have expertise in division, or how does, how do we make this plan?
As far as projecting the, the cost of the projects or the projects themselves, I mean, we do have.
Both, I mean, the fact that we're going to need to do it, and guess about how much we need to set aside to do it.
Okay. So as far as assessment, you know, Gary, our head of maintenance, you know, helps to keep kind of his perspective on, on what is becoming problematic, as far as like the roof repair at the school board office building. You know, he knows best how frequently we're repairing that. Previously, we had a new roof put on, what, two, this past year or the year before, new roof on King George Elementary. And that was based on the input from Gary, who was constantly contracting for people to come in and, and address the seams, and that's a tray roof kind of thing, to address the seam. So, you know, we do get input from, from Gary directly and the maintenance folks. Sometimes we get input, like the, tonight, we talked about Honeywell partnering with us, and the need to replace the chillers for more efficient, more reliable chillers at Sealston Elementary. So sometimes we'll rely on partners, particularly with energy usage. And then ultimately, sometimes we've used, we, we are currently still completing a fifteen-year energy efficiency program that we entered into many years ago. And what that allowed us to do was to reduce our energy costs and to reinvest the dollars, the savings, into payments against a bond that we took to do the HVAC system at King George Elementary as an example. So we didn't have to go back through the CIP to the county for more money. We simply found savings within our operating budget from year to year to fund a capital project, the magnitude of that HVAC system at King George Elementary, just as an example.
Yeah, that actually leads to that question I had, is how often do we consider HVAC a CIP project? Because we just approved something today with our own funds, it wasn't CIP, right? So is it typically CIP? And that was just a good deal that we got to take advantage of?
Sometimes, you know, if we don't have a funding source, then yes, it could be a CIP issue, but, you know, I've, I've tried to be resourceful over the last ten years, and I think the energy management program was a good deal and still is a good deal for us, because we, we addressed major, all of the, the bard units at the school board office and preschool, the HVAC system on top of King George Elementary School. I mean, some major needs in our division, we were able to address without having to go back to the board of supervisors through a CIP for funding.
Okay, so I guess, online, as I was thinking, you mentioned the, the roof, and so obviously, maintenance notices that there's problems, and then yes, they should speak up, but I would think that we can say, okay, we know a roof lasts about twenty years, whatever it is, to pay them what kind it is. I mean, just plan these things out for all our different buildings.
Yes.
Does that happen, or?
Yes, and we do, as that comes due, then we'll enter like in year five of it, we'll say, okay, keep in mind, you know, we've got a roof that needs to be addressed. So for like the King George Middle School roof, you know, that was something that entered, you know, maybe two, three years out in the CIP, and then it worked its way forward over the years until we were able to fund it and have it replaced.
Okay, so I only see one roof on there right now, so we're only just being, changing one roof in the next five years? Is that?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we've been, we've done well to get the roofs replaced.
Okay.
Outside of the school board office, and really, that's, you know, I really think that's a big, bigger question, you know, do we, as a county, do they want to invest money in roofing that section? Or do they want to invest the money in, in building a new preschool facility along with a roof?
And just looking at this list here, one thing that comes to mind is, I remember taking my daughter to gymnastics at the school board office, probably nine, ten years ago, and thinking, I must be lost, because there's only this building here, that must be, you know, what's the word? Yeah, there's no way, you know, that, that's where it is, I'm, I'm, but.
So you found.
So is that going to be in the list for?
You found the Quonson Hut in the back? No, actually, the Quonson Hut, where they do the gymnastics, if you're asking about that?
Right.
Now, that, that facility is the county's facility. I think that's actually technically the school board's facility, but I think for like a dollar, we leased it to them for fifty years. And so Parks and Rec uses that, and they've had discussions separate from us, of course, about how they might either replace or renovate that.
It's not ours, that's why.
Sorry, I have, if you don't mind, one more question.
Sure, I did, before we, I just, before we change subjects, I wanted to just maybe comment. I know, Mr. Rolls, you were asking about the planning for paying for those, and like, we're asking for the twenty-five million, and Dr. Benson, correct me if I step out of line, but like, they're, they're county-managed capital improvement projects, so we're not getting the twenty-five million to go manage the building of a new school, right? So it's just like the courthouse project, and the way the middle school's being paid off, like all that. So it's, they're county, like, we're submitting them as a recommendation, but the county manages the, right? It's a county project at that point in time.
Right, our part is giving them.
Correct.
Appropriate notice.
Yeah.
In that regard, just hopefully, one last question, and the county owns, like the land at the current preschool and the school board office sits on, basically, that forty-seven acres or whatever it is, the county owns that, right?
No, I believe the school board owns that.
School board owns it. Okay, interesting, but the middle school that you were suggesting, maybe that's where they might put the new preschool, the county owns that?
That was returned to the county.
The old middle school.
So that leads to my question, is, I guess, making negotiated deals, I mean, there's, I think it's forty-seven acres, is that what I saw, where the, the preschool and the school board, I know a lot of it is forests now or trees, but if we were to sell that and build a whole new system over where the middle school is, I'm not saying we need to talk about that right now, but those kinds of negotiations, does that go on with the planning commission or us talking to the board of supervisors, or what? I mean, out of the box thinking to afford to pay for this?
I don't know, we've never had, I've never encountered that kind of conversation. Outside of there's been, you know, there've been individual over the years, not currently necessarily, but over the years, there have been individual supervisors who I think have proposed ideas with their colleagues. So there's been informal discussion, but I don't know of a formal discussion that's talked about. Well, I take that back, I think there was one time where there were, the county was entertaining the thought of a developer coming in and utilizing the track you're talking about, a facility you're talking about.
Yes, the developer was out of Richmond, I believe. Wasn't it the same developer who talked about doing Ralph Bunch renovating? Was that before you?
I don't, I'm, you're stretching my memory, Ms. Hawk, but I do know that one was, you know, a proposal to look at redeveloping the school board office area. And again, this, this is not something that came to fruition, but.
Is it worthwhile to look at some of these out-of-the-box things that would be more palatable for the board of supervisors once it got to them, some of these ideas? Is it worth conversations to think about?
I think you'd have to ask them.
All right, well, I already have.
Yeah.
So should, okay, I mean, I think it might be worthwhile to have conversations, but maybe that should go between the two board chairs, or? I'm asking.
I don't know, I don't really, that's a stumper, I don't have a good, I don't have.
I know, there's no protocol for it, so I guess, but anything that we could, you know, obviously, to help the kids and build this preschool, because we all know we need that, and to include possibly school board offices to be part of that whole situation, and maybe even, as you suggested, another elementary, because we got thirty acres over there. And if we could sell the forty-seven acres and everything that we have here, and even though we'd initially get a school bond, or excuse me, get a bond for the twenty-five million with the understanding that we would eventually sell that once all that is completed, and then we would return the money to the county, I know I'm.
So I recommend attending the supervisor and planning commission meetings and learning more about the process.
Okay, but I, if the school, the board of supervisors are amenable to those kinds of conversations, I think it'd be valuable for us to have them.
All right, Dr. Benson, I have a couple of questions. I'm just wondering about the, the order of the project titles. So I know you've got the two that are listed as urgent priorities, like preschool replacement and the access control system at Potomac. Is there a reason they're not both, like, the access control system's not listed up as like the number two project? Or is that semantics?
Oh, it's a good question, point you make, it's not necessarily in priority order, it's, it's more or less.
Just chill.
Historical kind of thing, so the, the words urgent, necessary, those are the county's.
Yep.
Monikers, or, or the way to, to.
Yeah, how to prioritize them.
Right, for the county, so, no, I, there's no implied priority, that the number one, that's simply a spreadsheet.
Okay.
They're entered in there.
All right, and then for the preschool project, I know in the first description, you do list a thing, recommended design that could complement a future fourth elementary school in King George County. I know that was in it last year, I think, and I probably didn't ask, I guess, what, um, what's meant by complement a future fourth, like be co-located with one, or?
Yes, I mean, it's, and again, this is just my, my advice.
Yep.
More or less, that, that, that space could be utilized, it could be constructed in a manner where potentially down the road, some of the ancillary spaces, in particular, the bigger spaces, you know, might be shareable. Might be, you know, if we're looking a way to be as efficient as we could with the preschool head start as a possibility, that's all that meant.
Okay, okay, all right, any further questions? No, all right, anything else, Dr. Benson?
That's it.
Okay, do you have a superintendent's report for us?
I, just briefly, one item I want to bring up as a matter of business, because I know budget-wise, we are continuing to work with our locality to secure funding for FY twenty-three. We do have a, just an update, the state general assembly did approve or adopt budget bills that are now at the governor's level, and the governor has, is now in that seven-day window when he can recommend changes or simply approve what's been forwarded to Governor Youngkin. So we will then, or we have received an updated, a. we will then, or we have received an updated, attentive, updated Calc tool is what they call it. And so our local revenue, a question was asked of me at the last, well, I don't want to say the last, but the last Board of Supervisors meeting I attended about this new entitlement, which for King George includes like 2 million in school construction funding. So the, what what has transpired is there's both a a grant, a pool of grant funds that can be accessed through application on a competitive basis, but they've also included the the school construction funding through the entitlement part of our our school funding. Here's the issue, as I see it, then, it's it's roughly $2 million for King George. So when the Board of Supervisors was having their discussion about local funding, they were using the estimated 33 million in state funding for King George. Well, that 33 million includes this 2 million, which is one, you know, which is just funded in year one of the two-year budget. So immediately you see that if we were to use that 2 million for debt service with the county, let's say the middle school would qualify. If that 2 million was used to offset what the county usually uses for debt service, you would think, okay, well, it's a wash. We can simply trade the 2 million of ours for 2 million of theirs. And then, but if we use their 2 million, so to speak, for operating costs, there's no money in the second year of the biennium. We create a cliff that, you know, I avoid those cliffs at all costs. So that's a piece of the the budget that's unique to this next two years that I'll need to I assume, or I anticipate, we're going to need to communicate with the board supervisors and come to a, an agreement as to how to utilize that. My recommendation would be to split it between the two fiscal years. And then, you know, conceivably, the 2 million over the two years that the county would save, you could hold on to that, maybe earmark that for years three and four to ease that that cliff, should that funding not be continued in the next biennium. So there there are options there. But all that to say, I just wanted to give you an update of where we are. It's a very complicated budget year, probably the most complicated I've I've encountered. But we're we're trudging forward and we're getting closer. And I'll keep you informed as to what communication the county needs as far as that school construction money. That's, that's unique. Usually, any new monies that are, that come forward from the state are it's baked in, so just what they call it. In other words, that's money that's dedicated for recurring costs that the state knows they've now made a commitment to keep that level of funding moving forward at minimum so that the costs associated can be supported locally. So not going
All right, all right. Thank you, Dr. Benson. Okay, we'll wrap up with board comment. Mr. Bush?
Just want to thank Dr. Bush. Did a great job in presenting that, especially to special education and all that inclusion things. And thank you, Ms. Fisher, for all of her work and presenting all the things about the the drug program and so on. Thank you very much. I know that was a lot of work. And also, Dr. Benson, thank you for considering and being open to the discussion and ideas for both the drug prevention and then also the weapons. I just appreciate that very much. It shows that we're all working together as a team, and we're trying to accomplish the best we can for the safety and well-being of our children and their success. Thank you.
Ms. Hawk?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Rolls?
I said a lot, so I'll keep this short. I think just, the only thing I think it's on a lot of people's minds right now is, I'll see school safety with things in the news. So do look forward to us. We're going to have the closed session, which obviously doesn't benefit the public at all as far as knowing what we're doing. So I do hope we have some conversations soon, just to address and reassure the public about that we're doing everything we can in your schools to ensure student safety. And just have that discussion. That's all.
Okay, Dr. Cutwright?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Benson for his tenure as Superintendent of King George Schools for the last decade. He has decided to retire in August after 34 years of public education. Board members, staff members, parents, and students have enjoyed his success and leadership and excellence with the King George County School Division. Dr. Benson, your students at East Carolina University will be fortunate to have you as a mentor and professor. As we move forward for the 2022, 23 school year, we would like to welcome Mr. Marcus Watson as a new principal at King George High School. Mr. Watson will join King George High School in July to prepare for the school year. In addition, we would like to welcome Dr. Casey Nice as a new principal at King George Middle School. And he will join King George Middle School also to prepare for the 22, 23 school year. And again, Ms. Fisher's already said this, but I would like to give a shout out to Potomac Elementary School. They have been named a heart of honor for the top 25 school by the American Heart Association. This honor shows that students and staff have made mental and physical wellness a priority and implement the Kids' Heart Challenge every year to help students, staff, and families the life-saving skill of hands-on CPR and morning signs. Congratulations, Hots. And I would also like to thank Dr. Bush for her inclusive practices that support the possibilities of all of us, all of our students. In conclusion, I again would like to say the safety and security of our students is of utmost importance. Thank you, Ms. Fisher, for your presentation on substance abuse in our schools. As you have stated, substance abuse awareness should be infused into the curriculum with intervention of school and community awareness. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cutwright. And I don't have any comment this evening. So do we have a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to state code, section 2.2-3711 point A point one, for the purpose of discussion, consideration of prospective candidates for employment assignment and substitutes of employees of the school board, and for discussion of specific employees for the school board, specifically the evaluation of the division superintendent.
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Ms. Hawk, did you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, we're now on closed session.
To return to open session.
I move that the King George County School Board return to open session and certify that pursuant to State Code 2.2-3712-Delta, only public business matters clothly exempted from the open meeting requirements under this chapter.